We are recording now.
Good evening. Tonight is the May 12th, 2025, public hearing on the proposed FY26 operating budget being held by the Finance Committee, with the option of a committee of the whole with the Town Council. And I do see that we have a committee of the whole. So my first order of business, since we're conducting this meeting virtually as permitted by law, and it's an entire virtual meeting, is to make sure members of the Finance Committee can hear and be heard. So I will call on each person by their name. And then after I'm finished, Lynn will call the council to order. We have a form of the Finance Committee. So I'm starting with Counselor Hanke.
Present.
Bernie Kubiak.
Present.
Andy Steinberg. Andy, if you would unmute. Andy? Andy? Andy, can you hear us? Doesn't look like he can hear us.
I'll take care of it. Keep going.
Okay, Bob Hegner is not here, and Alicia Walker is not here. And Thomas is not here. So I have called, we still, we do have a quorum once Andy says he can hear us. Andy, can you hear us? We're not hearing you.
Make sure your sound is turned up, Andy. Andy, can you shake your head?
Can you hear us? It doesn't look like he can hear us. I see your lips moving, but we're not hearing you. So maybe Lynn, I'll text him. Maybe he should come back in.
Yeah, I'll take care of that, Kathy.
Okay. All right, so I'll turn it over to Lynn to call the council to order.
Okay, hold on just. Okay. I'd like to proceed with the rest of the council that's here. And please unmute and answer present when I read your name. Hold on two seconds. Pat DeAngelis.
Present.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Present.
George Ryan.
Present.
Pam Rooney.
I'm here.
Counselor Ette.
Present.
Counselor Lord.
Present.
And Kathy, I noticed that Bob Hegner has joined.
Bob Hegner has joined us. Bob is co-chair of Finance. Bob, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Sorry, I'm late.
That's okay.
All right, so given that we have a quorum of the council present, I'm calling the council meeting to order at 6:37.
And if other members of Finance join us, we will recognize them. And when Andy can, we can see that he's here. So the first order of business tonight is Paul Bachmann, Town Manager, will give a very brief summary presentation of the operating budget. And this, the full budget presentation was given to the council last Monday night, and it will be, is available in the packet and also on the web seat. Then I will open it to general public comments and/or questions. We will, we ask everyone to raise their hands if they would like to make a comment or ask a question. If there are specific questions that are asking for additional information, we will not be answering either of them now, but we will be posting answers as part of the meeting transcript and make sure that we get back to you. So our purpose tonight is to hear from you, not to engage in a conversation. So Paul, I am turning it over to you.
Thank you, Kathy. So tonight, as Kathy said, I'm going to summarize the town manager's budget for FY26. This is now in the hands of the Town Council, and they'll be making their decisions in the next month or so. It's a budget that is balanced, but we are only able to achieve that by making some difficult decisions. FY26 presents some new challenges that we, that we haven't faced, which includes some inflationary pressures which are intense, increasing wages in a competitive job market, rising healthcare costs, especially rising healthcare costs, energy costs, and supply chain issues. So this slide, it's just, I just want to recognize the incredible work that our, our finance team put together, Holly Drake, Melissa Zawodski, Jennifer LaFountain, and Athena O'Keefe, all played an important part in producing this, this document. So I just want to thank them all. I also want to thank our colleagues at the library and the schools. Library Director Sharon Sherry and Superintendent Schools Dr. Z, and the district's Finance Director Shannon Bernacchia are all important partners in the development of this budget. I really appreciate the communication cooperation that they've all shown. Next slide. So this is a budget. The total budget for the town is $103,261,100. It's the first time that our budget has exceeded $100 million. The budget is balanced. No override is required. The budget reflects and supports important community values and recognizes the importance of providing excellent services and fiscal stability. When we began this budget process back in FY26, or in November of '26, we knew the path ahead was going to demand making choices. And I think the council recognized that at the time as well. And established budget policy guidelines to help guide our decision-making. This budget aligns with the Town Council's budget policy guidelines and the subsequent recommendations that the Town Council made even as late as April. The budget includes freezing 6.4 vacant positions across town departments. This was an exceedingly difficult decision. It reflects our determination to maintain fiscal balance while continuing to deliver high-quality services to the community. Freezing these vacancies rather than resorting to layoffs allowed us to preserve jobs and protect our dedicated workforce. Supporting our working staff has been a guiding principle throughout the budget process. This approach also enables us to meet our commitments for health insurance, honor our collective bargaining partners by funding FY26 cost-of-living adjustments, and, and this explicitly acknowledges both the rising cost of living and the invaluable contributions of our town staff. Every one of these frozen positions is needed, and we will work hard to fill them in the future. I wanted to be clear that this decision does not lessen my commitment to our police, fire, DPW, recreation, and CREST departments. Next slide. So our budget, if you look at this, we, it's made up of five major components. There's the town municipal budget, which is all the town services, police, fire, DPW, town hall, things like that. There's the elementary schools, which are, we have three elementary schools. There's the library. There's the Amherst-Palom Regional School District, and we have the capital improvement program. And they each have an important role to play in making sure our town is a great place to live. Next slide. So I've already talked about rising health insurance and fixed cost. Back in November, we did our presentation on the financial indicators, where we looked at what we saw as trends in the coming years for our budgets. At that point, we projected an increase of, that we could afford of about 3% in our budgets. Subsequently, the Town Council's budget policy guidelines, which were adopted in December, established a 3% increase as one of its guidelines, with the full expectation that this increase could be modified during the course of the budget preparation process. The guidelines also recommended that staff adjust revenue projections with a focus on areas where forecasts have proven to be conservative. So after, we refined the budget numbers and reviewed the governor's budget, and I presented a recommendation that the overall town budget could be increased by 4%. Town staff believe that while these projections were more aggressive, as requested by the council, than we normally projected, they were within a reasonable range. Historically, funds were allocated proportionally across the four area, major areas of government, the town, the elementary schools, the regional schools, and the library. This would have been a 4% increase for each budget. The longstanding budget practice was changed this year in response to the Town Council's vote on April 7th to recommend the regional school budget increase by 4.81%, and the elementary school budget increase to, up to 5%.
Paul, I just need to pause for a minute and ask Kathy to check to see if Andy can hear.
Andy, are you, can you hear us? You have to unmute. It looks like you're still muted.
Now I can hear. I have, I'm still having computer problems, but I can hear.
Great. Thank you for joining us.
Okay, next slide, Lynn. So we start, when we start our budget project, we really start with revenues. You can't spend what you don't have. We start with a 2.5 increase in property taxes that were, that were allowed under Proposition 2.5, and then we can add new growth. And that equal comes up about to 3.5% increase in our revenue from property taxes. This does not include any of the revenue that would be coming into the town for the debt exclusion override that was passed for the elementary school. So we estimate that this is what we should be able to expect this year. Local receipts were boosted utilizing projections that were more aggressive, i.e. less conservative than prior years. And state aid, we projected to have a minimal increase, especially in other governmental, general governmental aid, which is UGA and Chapter 70, which goes to the schools. And I should note, we will be seeking significant increases for our water and sewer rates as those departments are facing the same headwinds as other parts of our government with health insurance and other costs outpacing inflation. Next slide. The expenditure summary really is, this is really a no-frills budget. We've had to reduce, we froze 6.4 positions. We honored our collective bargaining agreements and commitment to our current employees. It preserves core services, although there may be some degradation in the delivery of these services because we have fewer people doing the work. We will be moving forward with the council's rental registration program, the CREST initiative, albeit with two fewer positions, full funding for DEI and sustainability, and reduced staffing in police and fire and finance. Next slide. For education funding, the council took a vote in early April, increasing their, the requests that we include funding for the, for the regional school and the elementary schools. The regional school committee voted on March 31 to request an increase of 4.81% from the town of Amherst. The overall increase for the regional school budget for all four towns is 6.5%. The town share represents reverting to the assessment method agreed to in the regional school district agreement, agreed to by all four towns in the region. The Amherst school commit, so that's 4.81%, and we're meeting that request by the regional school committee. The Amherst school committee, which oversees the town's three elementary schools, voted an increase of 6.6%. This is, this increases not in compliance with the Town Council's guidelines, nor within the Town Council's April 7th vote to recommend up to 5%. So I have included a full 5% into the budget, noting that 1% of the funding is bridge funding, which means it's one-time funding that produces that full 5% increase. Next slide. So the council has established significant goals for the town manager and my staff to, to meet. And we are going to be working hard to meet them all. I think we will be able to meet the vast majority of them, although we may have some challenges. And I do want to just call out one thing. A week ago, Sustainability Director Stephanie Chicarella and I received the Climate Leader Community Designation, and we're part of the first group in the state to achieve this designation. The Lieutenant Governor, in her remarks, said that this designation was for those overachieving climate act, overachieving climate activist community, communities, and Amherst certainly is one of them. And the budget maintains providing funds to support climate action initiatives and making our buildings and vehicles use less fossil fuel. Next slide. So in conclusion, this is a realistic, no-nonsense budget. It balances our commitments to a strong fiscal policy with the recognized needs and desires of the community. We have emphasized resilience as our staff will be trying to meet the many needs of the town, but with fewer employees. We will need compassion, understanding, and supportive ideas to navigate these coming years. And last year, lastly, we have taken the responsible road. I really did not want to have to reduce the town staff freezing these positions, but each of these positions would provide added support for the many duties of these departments. Fiscal responsibility is crucial. Without a strong fiscal base, no initiatives are possible. Next slide. And so this is a budget calendar. Where we are, you see the first three things. Tonight is our third checkbox, which is May 12th, which is a public hearing tonight. And then there will be a public forum on the capital improvement program on June 2nd, and the Town Council is projected to vote on June 16th. And I just want to note that all these documents from the school, the library, and the town are available on this, on the website there, or you can do amherstma.gov/budget, and there's a link there that you can go straight to all these documents. So thank you for letting me present that.
Thank you, Paul. And I think we can take this. Great. As Paul said, the full documents are available that you can go more deeply. And, and I just want to mention that the Finance Committee has begun a review. We published the agendas. Tomorrow's agenda will be looking at the public safety, the general government, and the Thursdays will be public safety. And anyone who wants to know exactly when, which can contact me. So at this point, we are open for public comments and questions or questions. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Lynn will be acting as a timekeeper for the three minutes. And we will call on people in the order at which they've raised their hand. So if you're interested in speaking, please raise your hand on Zoom. And Lynn, are you bringing the people in, or is Athena? I am. Okay. So I see that we have four. I see one panelist has a hand up, so. Oh, it's, I didn't mean to do that. It's my hand. There we go. Right now, we have four people who have asked to speak. So Lynn will bring each of you in, in the order that she sees you in the list. Vince O'Connor, you are with us. If you unmute and you have up to three minutes, please state your name and where you live. But you'll have to unmute. Vince? Vince, it looks like you have unmuted now.
Okay.
But we can't hear, you're going to have to speak up a little bit. Your voice, I think, is too faint.
Okay. I think it will help unmask. So my, my only comment about the budget is about the process relating to road and street repair. I think that the council has a structural problem that I would like the council to consider. I really think that as a way to make sure that some streets, other than the main thoroughfares, get, get done, is that each council member should be invited publicly, to publicly name streets, two streets in their district, and, and the at-large counselors as well. And, and have those nominations for repair be publicized, be itemized, and be discussed at a, at a meeting of a committee to be set up by the council. A, not a formal public works committee that would take matters out of the hands of the council, but a public works committee of the council that would, in a meeting in public, enable the public to attend and have a focus, allow there to be a focus, both by counselors and the public, on neighborhood streets that have been left to disrepair. And I think that a committee of the council would be, is more appropriate than a private process involving members of the council either going to the Public Works Superintendent or to the manager and asking this, that, or the other street be put on a list. So I think, one, a more public process, a public process that involves counselors and, and the public, I think, would be, would lead to better results in terms of street and road repair. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Athena, I have a question. How do I remove him, but now allow him to be back in the attendees?
There's a little button up on the right. Sorry. Usually.
He's gone. Okay.
You could do the dot, 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 remove permission to talk.
Yeah, got it. Next one is coming in.
And if you just press allow to talk instead of promote to panelists, this will be a little quicker.
Thank you.
So Rich and Meg, you, if you unmute, Rich and Meg McClellan, you are, you have joined us.
Hi, I'm Rich McLean. I live on Alpine Drive. I just, I wanted to thank the council for voting for an increase over the 4% for the regional and elementary schools. I really appreciate that some effort was made towards stemming the budgetary problems with the schools. I also, though, wanted to really emphasize that I've, I've attended two budget presentations now, and I've been very disappointed that neither one has explicitly stated that the schools are still losing nearly two dozen positions. And that, yes, this budget did increase funds provided to the school districts more than the 4%, but they're still not meeting the needs of our school districts. I do appreciate that efforts were made to stem the problems, but we have not solved these problems. They will come again next year. We need to be doing more to fund our schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Kathleen Mitchell, you have joined us.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just, just wanted to make a quick comment. First, I just wanted to thank the town manager for making a lot of this information very clear in both the budget and in the presentation about exactly where the trade-offs were being made, where money was coming from. I think there's a temptation and a tendency in the community to pit one part of the town against another, or one need against another. And so I just think transparency and how that is happening is very important. I think there's been some misunderstandings, even so, in the community about where the money is coming from. I think there's a misunderstanding that the money from the school, the extra money that the schools are getting above the 4% is causing the loss of 6.4 positions on the municipal side. So I just wanted to state that my understanding, from what the manager has said, is that that is not the case. And I just will echo what the previous commenter said, that even though the schools are getting above guidance, they are cutting a tremendous number of positions and a tremendous amount of money compared to what level services would be. So we, we, even with this additional money, we will see significant changes in both the elementary and the regional schools and the impacts on our educators and our students. So I do appreciate the additional, but I just want it to be part of the narrative, that the need is not met. And that, you know, the road forward is still going to be difficult. So I appreciate it, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. And I want to pause quickly. Martha Hammer, you joined us, but let me just make sure. I see that Alicia Walker, who is a member of the Finance Committee, has joined us, and I want to make sure Alicia can hear, and we can hear her. Alicia?
Hi, Kathy. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, Martha, you are with us.
Thank you. Martha Hannah, District 5, speaking as an individual. Our town budget should reflect our values. You, our elected counselors, are responsible for upholding our town's values. The proposed budget cuts CRESTs, our unarmed responders, below what I think is the threshold for safe and effective functioning. It's not just a 25% loss of responders, but the elimination of the implementation manager's position. This was funded by a grant that ends July 1st. Further grant funding is likely, but it's, it's not here yet. The new federal government's words and actions, particularly the unlawful actions of ICE, are causing so many of our local residents to feel vulnerable and to fear fearful of any police interactions. Thus, our need for the services of CRESTs unarmed responders is far broader and more urgent than initially envisioned. Surely, short-term bridging funds could be found to support the implementation manager until grant funding is secured. Unfortunately, the experienced, dedicated individual who has filled this position since the start of CREST is now leaving, just in a couple of weeks, once she's been told that her position is eliminated. And to me, that seems very frustrating and unnecessary loss. Yes, there have certainly been challenges, and, and CRESTs duties and so on need some rethinking, but CREST is steadily growing under Camille's astute leadership, and many of us can attest to its positive impact. So I hope that you, as a council, will think about that and think about the position specifically of implementation manager. Thank you, and thank you for all of your work.
Thank you, Martha. Ronnie, you're with us.
Yes, hi, this is Ronnie Parker. And I'm here pretty much to say exactly what Martha just said. From my personal perspective, I had my doubts about CREST. It looked like there were a lot of people, there was a lot of money being spent on a lot of training, and there weren't really any results that I saw. And I kept hearing about dispatch issues, and then it didn't really look to me like those issues could be solved. But I've changed my mind and made a complete turnover. Why? Well, part of it, Martha has talked about, the need for non-police support, safety, is so great now. I cannot even begin to tell you how great it is. And also because I'm seeing that despite the fact that CREST has not been widely marketed or linked into the existing systems, a lot of people are calling CREST. People are showing up at CREST. And even though they're not available during the hours that we need them most in the evenings, and that's not their fault, they've, they're placed in a building that closes down at 4 o'clock, even with those restrictions, they've shown how important they are and how valuable they are to our community. And I have also heard personally from a number of individuals about the need for CREST, who are its, the users of its services. So I go with Martha that I understand that cuts need to be made, but not the implementation manager. It would be almost impossible at this time of great need to, to replace her training and her management and the unique aspects that CREST calls upon. So I would strongly urge you to keep that position. You would only be bridging it till her grant comes through. So that's what I'm calling about. I understand that we have to cut, cuts, and some, it has to go somewhere, but not this particular position at this time because this is the person who coordinates all the CREST staff. So if you take her away, it's going to make all of it more difficult, including having fewer staff at a time when need is greater. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. Jeff Mazer, you are with us and can speak.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, Jeff Mazer, Ridge Crest Road in Amherst. So I was just, Ethan, I just, I have some questions and thoughts. And Kathy, I know we spoke about the budget. I was looking at the actuals for Q3 2025. I appreciate that information being shared. And, you know, I, I agree with like the, what's been said by Kathleen and with Rich and also the people before in terms of CREST and the cuts that are made. in terms of CREST and the cuts that are made. And the thing that I'm concerned about is that like it looks like there might be more abundance in the budget than, sorry, in what the, in the actuals and that the budget isn't aggressive enough in terms of revenue. When I look at Q3 2025 and I see that revenues are almost, are 81% at the end of the, the quarter as opposed to 75%, which would be the benchmark and expenses are 73%. That to me is saying that 2025 is shaping up to have another really large surplus. And that surplus could be going into the schools, could be going into CREST. And, you know, I think at the end of the day, if I see like there's like four or $5 million of surplus while we're making these cuts and the budget is based on the 2025 budget, I'm going to be like, why, why have we not adjusted our benchmarks for what we're seeing based on actual information versus doing our budget based on the 2025 budget because we're not using the best information? Then at the end of fiscal '26, if we've made these cuts and there's still a three or $4 million surplus or even more, I'll actually be upset that I feel like you guys have, I know you, I really appreciate the work that you're doing and that you have tried to re-put some money into schools and, but that there's the opportunity to do more. And I think we have that information right now. And, and I just kind of questioned the, what is happening with the budget? If year after year, we're having surpluses and the schools having to make these big cuts? And then like this is going to be squirreling away funds that could be used for operations into the capital budget. So I appreciate you listening and just want to put that on record because, you know, I'll come back again next year and the year after, if, if I see this and, and I'm going to press harder on this. If, if the same thing happens next year and the year after, because we've made cuts in the schools the past multiple years and we've had multimillion dollar surpluses at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Hi, are you calling on me?
Yes, Amber, you, you are with us and you can speak.
Okay, thanks. My name is Amber Condon Martin and I live in District 2. Coming to speak to you tonight about a couple of issues with the budget. First, I just wanted to, again, restate as I did in my email that I don't want to see any cuts or freezing to CREST. I think CREST is really, really important to our town because of, and not just because of, but really highlighted now by the attacks that are coming down from the Trump administration against people of color, against immigrants, against LGBTQ folks. So I think that having this program in our town is, is and has been a really unique alternative to traditional policing. And it's needed now more than ever. And I'm really, really happy that we have it, but I think it's going to be made completely ineffective if we lose our implementation manager. So I again, support folks who on this call highlighted the importance of retaining that position with bridge funding. And also I would encourage you not to freeze those two positions because if you keep cutting down the department, eventually it is going to be completely ineffective and will probably just disappear. And that's, I don't want to see that happen. I'm also an advocate for the schools. I think that, you know, again, appreciate that it was, the increase to the budget was, was made. It certainly is not what was needed or, or enough by any means. So the regional schools are losing about 12.1 positions next year. The elementary schools will lose 10 to 11. It's about $2 million in cuts. So this is by no means a fully funded budget and it's really going to hurt our schools. After another, you know, our last year when we already had cuts to the schools, getting to the point where there's nothing left to cut. And I don't see any long-term plan, you know, for our schools or by the town manager or by this body, you know, of how we're going to fund them. And I feel that this body has also locked us into a highly expensive and unsustainable library project that now we can do nothing about. And I think that, you know, unfortunately, our schools have been, you know, are going to take the hit. And I think year after year, we're going to see the same sad situation where, you know, parents are begging you to, to fund these schools and there's literally nothing left to cut. So it's a sad place to be. I don't want to see anything frozen or cut. But again, there's plenty of money there. There's a surplus every year. So it's not a lack of money. It's a lack of, you know, good decision-making about the money. So I would encourage all of you to reconsider and before you approve this budget. Thanks.
Thank you, Amber. Another hand has come up, Lynn. We are available. Laura is available.
Laura? Can you hear me?
Yes, you, you have joined us.
Thank you. I'm calling also, just like a couple of other folks have shared it all. I'm an educator in Amherst Regional Public Schools. And I guess my question is, with this surplus, how, if we invited you in, how do you explain to our students that are being educated that there is this surplus, but that like over 22 positions will be cut? So again, yeah, I just want to know like, how would you explain that to, to the students? So that's the comment that, that I'd like to make.
Thank you for your comment. Right now, I'm not seeing any other hands up. We have about 15 members, we have 15 members of the public in attendance. And several of them have already spoken. So wait a couple of minutes to make sure there were no other comments. And I think everyone knows that we, written comments are very much appreciated and we do read them. We, we got two or three today on specific areas of the budget. Some of them were just questions on how to interpret numbers that they were seeing. And I think, I personally read every single one of them when they come in because sometimes it's questions we too have as we're going through the budget. But I'm not seeing any other hands up at this point. We have one, one more person having had me stall. Another hand is up. Angelica Castro, you are with us.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I am Angelica Castro and I am a, been resident of Amherst since 2000 and have raised four children here. And I would like to also voice my, voice my concern and opinion around CREST. And I know that many times when I needed services and CREST wasn't around, it would have been really great having kids and also kids' friends who had mental health challenges, like, just like all, a lot of us have had to have some options other than the police department. And so I've, I've worked with CREST, I, as a community member, I've done trainings with them and I see the value, the invaluable presence that they've had. And so I also support not cutting anything with CREST and especially the implementation manager position as folks have mentioned, what a vital position. And so if that was eliminated, especially, how does the department continue to function? So I am in support of continuing to fund CREST fully and not make any cuts. Again, because of my own personal experiences and folks and friends in the community who have benefited very much from their presence. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. I think that at this point, that concludes public comment. So we will, I will entertain, I motion to adjourn the Finance Committee meeting. Remember, the Finance Committee, and then turn it over to Lynn to adjourn the council meeting. We've been, we've adopted a practice of voting to adjourn to make sure we're all in agreement that we're adjourning. So I make a motion to adjourn. The Finance Committee. Seconded. So I'll call, Kathy, is it yes? Mandy?
Aye.
Rob, Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Bernie Kubiak?
Support.
And Alicia Walker?
Yes.
I think I got everyone. So Lynn, I turn it over to you to adjourn the council.
I, I make a motion to adjourn the council. Is there a second?
Second, DeAngelis.
Then I'm going to go on. Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
On a Devlin Gothier?
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Pam Rooney?
Yes.
Counselor Ette?
Aye.
Counselor Lord?
Aye.
Counsel, Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
The Finance Committee counselors get to vote too, Lynn.
Oh, okay, thank you. Counsel Hanky?
Aye.
Counsel Shane?
Yes.
Bob Hegner?
Yes.
Bernie Kubiak, oops.
He's not, he doesn't have to.
Let's see, Alicia Walker?
Yes.
And Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
And how about Lynn Griesmer?
Oh, Lynn, I said earlier Lynn Griesmer.
Okay.
I think we, we are at this point doubly adjourned. And I, I want to thank all the members of public who took the time to give us comments. I took notes and I think we are all listening closely, so we really appreciate it. The meeting is adjourned at 7:15. Thank you very much.